Under the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit the meeting through any meeting. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Before I ask for a roll call, I'd like to welcome our latest, our newest member to the board, Lisa Bogarski. Welcome aboard. So I'd ask for a roll call.
Member Glenn present?
Member Ryan present?
Member Lisa Bogarski present?
Member me present. Okay, I've got a number of items that are being continued, so I'm going to do those first because I'm sure there must be some people here that are here for an item that isn't going to be, is going to be continued. This is a letter that's addressed to the board, 5462 Mass. Avenue, 15 Glenwood Way, Planning Board Case 2018-23, here, board members. Kindly accept this correspondence as the applicant's formal request to continue the hearing until the next planning board meeting on February 6, 2019. Although much progress has been made regarding the city engineering department's comments as well as the comments of the peer review, the applicant requires more time to address issues raised. Thank you for your consideration, William J. Phelan. I have a motion to accept the request to continue to February 6 of 2019.
Sub move.
To a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let me jump back. I also have a request, again, addressed to the board. We represent LBC Partners and their affiliates Hancock Business Center LLC, American Eagle Investment LLC, Place at Parkway Q LLC, and Parkway Q Business Center LLC, collectively LBC. LBC and its affiliates have submitted applications to the planning board for approval of the final subdivision plans for the fall. Number one, 1534 to 1538, 1546, and 1550 to 1556 Hancock Street, case number 2017 subdivision 01. Two, 100 to 134 Parkway, case 2017 subdivision 2, and three, 119 to 151 Parkway, case 2017 subdivision 03. Planning board hearings for these three subdivisions will continue for the November meeting. On behalf of the LBC, we respectfully request that the hearings be further continued. So I would ask for a motion to accept the request for continuance to our March meeting.
Sub move.
For a motion?
Sub move.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is a request for 137, 139 Sagamore Street, Planning Board Case 2018-22. Kindly accept this correspondence as the applicant's formal request to continue their hearing until the next scheduled planning board meeting on February 6, 2019. Although much progress has been made regarding the city engineering department's comments as well as comments from the peer review, the applicant requires more time to address these issues. Thank you for your consideration, William J. Phelan. I have a motion to accept the request to extend to February 6 for 137, 139 Sagamore Street. Come over.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is a, I hear somebody that sounds better than me, is for a request for 35 Main Street, Planning Board Case 2018-15. Kindly accept this correspondence as the applicant's formal request to continue their hearing until the next scheduled planning board meeting on February 6, 2019. Although much progress has been made regarding the city engineering department's comments as well as the comments of the peer review, the applicant requires more time to address issues raised. Specifically, it's been determined that the soil test could be performed in order to determine the viability of the proposed drainage plan. Thank you for your consideration, William J. Phelan. And state a motion to continue this to our February 6 meeting.
Sub move. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
As part of that correspondence, we've also received a, two pieces of correspondence. It's actually, this one is addressed to Consul Crowell, Consul President Crowell. Please be advised that we're still against the four-unit proposed structure of 35 Main Street. Thank you for your help. Happy New Year, Maureen and Frank Brillo. And the second piece of correspondence is by Eddie Romasio. I will not be able to attend the January 9th planning board meeting. For the record, I oppose the original proposal for this property. I will also, I will oppose the new plan. Parking on the street is a major concern. I all live on Main Street, and I don't think it can be eliminated by changing the proposal. That's from Eddie Romasio, 34 Main Street. Okay, continuing with our continuances. The next item is a request from Robert W. Hanez. Please accept this letter as a request to continue the hearing on the above referenced project, which is the Woodwell Street subdivision. The applicant, Fox Rock, is requesting a continuing so that it can further review the ongoing project complaints. If you could kindly reschedule us for the March of 2019. Thank you for consideration, and we look forward to discussing this project as well as further with you. Sincerely, Robert W. Hanez. Motion to accept the request to continue it to March of 2019. Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, did I miss anything? Okay, I will. Okay. All right. We're going to get to our agenda. Okay, notice is hereby given in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law Draft, Chapter 48, Section 11, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 9, 2019, on or after 7:00 p.m. in the First Floor Boards and Commissions Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, on the application of 142 Willard Street, LLC, Ian McDermott, Manager, 7, White Lawn Avenue, Milton, M.A., 02186, for a site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance title 17, Section 9.5.1, which is site plan review, and special permit under Section 5.1.17, which is parking waiver. The applicant proposes the construction of a new four-story, seven condominium unit residential building for 14 parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscape, drainage, and other site modifications. Proposed, the property contains 9,714 plus or minus square feet and is located at 142 Willard Street. The property, the subject property is located within Business B zoning district and is shown on the assessment plan, 4073 Lot 9. Yep. All right, I have a piece of correspondence that's addressed to me as the chairman. I've received the Quincy Planning Board's notice of a public hearing for case 2018-21, 142 Willard Street, submitted by Ian McDermott, who is seeking to demolish the present structure and construct a new four-story, seven-unit condominium residential building at 142 Willard Street. In May 2018, I held a community meeting on this property. Following the meeting, I submitted a number of questions to the developer and his attorney, Christopher Harrington. I have reached out to the applicant's attorney to answer these questions. I have submitted at the residence's request this past spring. Attached is a copy of our correspondence. This late response to the residence's concerns does not allow me time to convey the answers to residents and for all those concerned to properly review. I respectfully ask that this matter be held, not excuse, shall not be heard as a planning board meeting until such time as all involved are fully informed of the details of this proposal and can express their support and opposition in part, in support or opposition of the application. It's signed by Nina Lee Yang, Counselor at Lodge. And I also have a request on behalf of the applicant. It's addressed to the Planning Director. On behalf of my client, I respectfully request a continuance of the above planning board case, February 2019 meeting. The continuance is requested to provide additional time for the city council, the butters, and city departments to review information and plan, plans submitted for this project. Signed, Christopher H. Harrington. So I entertain a motion to continue this to our February meeting. For a motion?
Sub move. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh yeah, that'd be a good idea. Nouncing to the agenda, I'd ask the board, I think, if they had an opportunity to review the minutes from November 14 on December 5 and our December 12 regularly scheduled planning board meetings, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm jumping around again. Under the business portion of our agenda, new business is to review and determination to either endorse or deny the 2019 proposed planning board meeting schedule revisions. You also have a copy. So I entertain a motion, understanding that it's fluid, that we accept our business, our schedule for our next year, for this year's, excuse me, agenda.
Sub move.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll just stay in the business portion of the meeting. Under new business, minor modification to assigned package for 1 to 15 Arlington Street, Planning Board Case 2016-01, review and determination to endorse or deny approval of minor modification to the assigned package for 1 to 15 Arlington Street, Planning Board Case 2016-01, which was previously amended and approved by the planning board on February 8, 2017.
Hey there. My name is Adam Moore, JAL Positivity, is Jared Billingsley with XFS Art Dallas, representative for the owner. Our project was originally submitted with a special permit. This hotel was originally submitted with a brand to be determined, we're ongoing negotiations. Since that time, we've now reached the conclusion that this hotel will be an IHG product, will be bringing forth a dual branded flag, which is a nationally trending hotel style, in which we have two hotel flags under one roof. And so we'd like to present to the committee the signage associated with that. So as I, as I mentioned, this is a dual-brand hotel, which is two hotels under one roof. And our site, Arlington Street, is approached from Newport Avenue, West Barthel, in both directions, as well as from Arlington Street. And our, our project has a sign associated for each brand at each one of these approaching facades. Architecturally, these signs are aligned with architectural elements, whether it's window lines, architectural bands, or primary faces. And so the brand standards for these two hotels, Stavebridge and Holiday Inn Express, are to use colors such as brown, green, and blue. With the help of ownership, we've worked with IHG to find a balance between these colors that work with both the community and the building design in itself, while also keeping IHG's brand standards. So we were able to negotiate using the Holiday Inn Express's primary green color, but substituting blues and browns required by the other brand in lieu of white and silver, which are more complementary to both the city's gate as well as our. And so that is, I believe you do have a signed permit package that was submitted as an exhibit.
Any questions of the applicant?
I think I have a question.
Yes.
So I think when you came last time, it wasn't clear what the brands were going to be, right? But we did know it was going to be a dual.
Right.
And I think member Barry, who's not here tonight, but I recall him being concerned about your signage from a perspective of being a sort of a gateway point of the city coming over the pond's approach. So I'm curious how we got to this point. Is this a scaled-down version of what was originally proposed?
Originally, what was proposed was a, just a generic term, I believe it was a Quincy hotel with two channels of letters. And this has been substituted now with the brand standard of each hotel's flag.
So this, this is what it would look like, the only color would be green?
Correct. And so the face color is white, which will be black, and then the returns will be silver. The H logo for Holiday Inn Express will be green.
I wish we had a better graphic than this, just so we could see how it really looks from the street and real, sort of almost like a road map rendering. Is the green a, is that something that's, that you've used in all of the branding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The Holiday Inn Express green is nationally standardized, and it was an item that was part of the discussion with brand, which, which originally we had tried to adjust, and there was no movement on the brand.
Okay. I just want to make sure that what we're seeing here is what we're actually going to see when it's finally a baked cake.
What you're seeing is actually the submitted package, which is also the shop drawings from the signage.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think in all fairness, and member Glenn alluded to it, remember Barry had some issues, yeah, lots of issues, that's not fair. And I understand that this is asking for a determination as to whether it's a minor modification, but I would like to have Mr. Barry have an opportunity to review the revised plans and comment. So I would ask that we could push this off to our February meeting, just for the determination and that Barry would have an opportunity to speak to questions, whether they are an opportunity in public forums or to discuss. So I entertain a motion to continue this, go our February meeting.
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is 12 Furnace Avenue, Planning Board Case 2018-19. Notice is hereby given that in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law Draft, Chapter 48, Section 11, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 9, 2019. Sorry. It's on or after 7:00 p.m. in the First Floor Boards and Commissions Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, Quincy Mass., on the application of Darren McGuire, 784 Tremont Street, Washington, M.A., 02118, for a site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance title 17, Section 9.5.1, site plan review, and special permit under Section 5.1.17 parking waiver. The applicant proposes the demolition of the existing two-family structure and the construction of a new six-unit residential building with 10 parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains 6,935 more or less square feet and is located at 12 Furnace Avenue. Subject property is located within a Business B zoning district and is shown on the assessment plan 4047, Lot 12. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Evan Fleming, from Fleming &amp; Fleming at 85 Place Street in Walts. As you indicate, I'm here on behalf of Brittany and Darren McGuire, who are the applicants in this matter for the property at 12 Furnace Avenue. A property located in a Business B zoning district. We're seeking, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, site plan review and also a special permit parking waiver, not for the number of spaces, but rather for the setbacks provided for the, for the parking spaces in the rear of the site. With me tonight is Mr. McGuire, Darren McGuire, and also his engineer, Sean Hardy, from Hardy Man Engineering. Sean will talk a little bit more detail about the site plan related matters and drainage, but I'd like to give kind of an overview, if I could, of the presentation. First of all, the property at 12 Furnace Avenue, as you indicated, is about 6,840 square foot site, 1,000 square foot site. Furnace Avenue is a dead-end street. It's a very short dead-end street that runs from Copeland Street towards the Southeast Expressway, and it dead-ends at the Southeast Expressway. It's a very mixed-use neighborhood in that particular area. Because of its Business B zoning, there's a number of different uses. There's a bar at the, at the corner of Copeland and Furnace Avenue. There's a commercial building at the end of Furnace Avenue. There's a large seven-story, 70-unit residential building across the street and large parking area. And behind this, this particular property is a large tractable land that was recently, or a few years ago, acquired by the city of Quincy for the purposes of installing and designing a pump station. So this is located in a floodplain zoning district as well, overlay district. So it required that we file an application with the Conservation Commission because of the floodplain designation, and we did so. The matter was reviewed and heard by that, that commission, and the commission issued an order of conditions. So that matter, that portion of the permitting has, has been, has been taken care of. This plan will also require zoning board of appeals approval because we are seeking some dimensional relief. We can talk about that in more detail if there's certain, if there's questions. The proposal that's before you tonight is to remove the existing two-family structure that occupies the property right now and construct a new four-story residential building consisting of six two-bedroom units. There will be parking under the building. The building is elevated in order, in compliance with the floodplain regulations, which Mr. Hardy will talk about in more detail. And the three stories above that parking will be six units, two per floor, again, all two bedroom units. We've provided 12 parking spaces, eight parking spaces under the building, and then additional four parking spaces in the rear of the site, for a total of 12 spaces, or two per unit, two spaces per unit. The total building, because of its elevation for the floodplain regulations, is about 37 feet in total height. The, it's very consistent with the, with the, at the peak of the existing roof on the two-and-a-half story building as it stands today. It'll be a flat, it will be a flat-roofed building, so there'll be no additional height from the, from the top floor. As I indicated, we've, we've already sought and obtained approval from the Conservation Commission. We will file an application with the zoning board of appeals after this body has an opportunity to review it. We recently received comments from the peer review engineer. Woodard &amp; Curran has actually been retained by the city to design the pump station in the rear of the site. So before I filed this application with this board, I actually reached out to Paul Jakes from Woodard &amp; Curran. I had a conversation with, with Paul. I shared the plans with Paul, so that he had an opportunity to review the initial design of the plans to ensure, and I think I did that at the suggestion of Mr. Stevens, to ensure that it wasn't going to have any negative impact on the city's plans for the pump station. Mr. Jakes reviewed those plans. He indicated that he didn't have any particular concerns, at least at that initial stage. And then his office was retained by the city as the peer review engineer to review this in more detail. And as I said, we just received their comment letter today, and Mr. Hardy indicated that he'll be reaching out to them to respond to their, their concerns. That's essentially an overview of the proposal. Mr. McGuire had an opportunity to speak with a number of his neighbors in that, in that area, and many of the, and three or four of the neighbors have, have indicated their support of the proposal, and I have support letters that I can provide to this body at a later time. We also reached out to Consul Palmucci, spoke with the counselor about it. He indicated and requested that I put together a letter that he, he shared with the neighborhood. And we haven't had any communication from the neighbors to date, but we're certainly happy to answer any comments or concerns they may have. So if I could, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Hardy, just to kind of walk through the site.
What are you doing? Any questions to Mr. Fleming? Okay. Great. Thank you.
Good evening. As Attorney Fleming said, I'm Sean Hardy, the engineer for the project. The existing site, as you said, is a dwelling. You can see there, it's got a paved area around it and a garage in the rear. All of that's proposed to be demolished. And then this is a smaller scale and fairly new target city, but the proposal there, kind of, it mimics as far as the impervious area, or overall, it's a net decrease in impervious area for the site, which means that's how we can accomplish reducing runoff. It is in a floodplain, so we do have to file a conservation and go through some of those standards as far as drainage goes. It's, there's some geotechnical work that has been done, there's some fill and a high groundwater table, so we received some waivers to them for some of the drainage requirements as far as some of the recharge values and things like that on the stormwater management policy. But overall, like I said, it's a reduction in runoff from the site. It does meet the flood standards. It's a cut in floodplain versus a fill, partially because, as the attorney said, it's elevated, the parking's under, and some of the landscaping is being changed around. So overall, it's a reduction in, it allows, provides more flood storage, reduces runoff, and meets those drainage requirements. I met today with the engineer, Mr. Sen, from the engineering department. I understand he had a review letter or a comment letter last week, and went through his, some of his things, and I'll be following up with him. Additionally, we received today the letter from Woodard &amp; Curran. I think a lot of those probably mimic the DPW comment letter, and some of them, I think they don't have the benefit of knowing that we already went through conservation and already resolved some of those things, so we'll be reaching out to them, and I think many of their comments will be easily resolved as well.
Any questions to Mr. Hardy?
Square footage of the units?
The units are about 900 square feet, and they're all consistent in the same size. And the entrances of underground parking near that right on Furnace Avenue, the rear of the building, are that?
Yeah, so if you come down out Furnace Avenue, come in, and it's, it's a one-way loop around the site. So you come in, and there's four parking spaces under the building, there's four in the back as well, and as you come around the building, there's four more on this side before you could exit back out again.
Any other questions to Mr. Hardy?
Thank you for the good rendering.
We'll give credit to the architects.
Yeah, that was not me.
And that's, and that was done really in, in light of the comments that the boards raised in the past about really getting a better feeling and idea of what the building will look like. So that rendering provides, and it actually shows on that rendering how they, how the cars will access the site as well. When they come around, they'll have the one, one lane will, will wrap the building. You can park in the rear of the site as you come around. You can park, you can park in the rear of the site. You can enter the garage on this side, and then come around and enter the garage on the other side as well. No, no cars will go through. The other benefit of this, of this proposal as well is that the existing conditions of that house are not floodplain compliant. And this building, however, will be floodplain compliant because it's being raised out of the floodplain. There has been flooding in that- There has been flooding in that area, and the heavy, heavy hundred-year storms in the past, there's been flooding in that area, hence why the city's looking at a pump station in that particular location. But this will certainly protect the residential occupants of that property by lifting the building up.
Any other questions? I, Fleming, would like to see some more landscaping.
Not where, I'm not sure where it can be added. The, is, I have, I think, I'm not sure if we have a better plan that can show the landscaping, but I can certainly bring up a plan that shows the creation of some landscaping. What happened in this particular front of the building is that there was a ramp initially proposed that Mr. Stevens and I reviewed in an initial drawing, and the ramp actually traverses the entire frontage of the site, provided for no landscaping at all. The new stairway was redesigned to provide for a lift, a lift system. So the stairway then was essentially centered in the middle of the building, and there's a lift in behind the stairs that provides for handicap access. So what it did is it added or provided a little bit of landscaping in the front of the site that didn't exist before. So there were improvements from the initial plan that was provided to the planning department. The other thing that happened, and Mr. Stevens can echo this, is the building was raised to the level that it could provide for parking under the building, which is a significant expense for Mr. McGuire to actually do that. But what it did is it added additional space, and it provided more space in the back of the site that was then available for the additional parking spaces. So it shows here, it doesn't show it very well, but this is the, some landscaping here, some landscaping in the back here in the corners. So that was added because of the changes that were made. And all of this area in the back is essentially a wooded, a wooded area as well, so none of this, none of this area will be developed, other than the use of it for the pump station. It's essentially a vacant parcel. So if you see it from an aerial, you can see quite a bit of mature trees and green in that back area. This is a commercial building, and this is that seven-story residential building. Remember the furnished housing, you see that sign on the highway.
Just one more quick question. I looked, the garage, is there room for bicycle storage or things like that in the residence?
Do you have any bikes? This middle section here as well, so the cars, the parking space is there, so that middle space in the building, there's some room that's available down under there.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public area. I'd ask anyone who wishes to speak, come forward, identify yourself. If someone doesn't want to speak but wants to be recorded, we have sheets on the window ledge over here.
How are you? My name's James Delai. I live diagonally across at one seventeen Cross Street. It looks nice, it looks like a nice piece of property, which would be good. I just wanted to make sure that there's definitely parking, which would be huge for me, just for the whole city. This just said there would be twelve parking spots, so sounds really good. The height restriction, it looks great. I think my roof's going to be higher than that, actually. And as far as conservation, if they said that the commission took care of it, I have faith in them, so I think it's good. And the new pump station coming should help also. As a person down in that area, I know they're making it less permeable, more permeable space there, I think they said, which is great, but it's not really, we're at the bottom of the barrel, so it's the people further up that are creating a problem for us. So I don't have an issue with it. I think it looks good as long as there's plenty of parking, which they have. And it looks like it'd be a nice asset to the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question of the applicant? When was the order of conditions issued by CONCON?
I forget the date, but it was in December.
So the appeal period is probably running?
Yeah, we have, it's been issued, so.
Okay, anybody else wishing to speak? Come on forward.
Hi, I'm Michael Cronin, ninety-six Cross Street. About probably three hundred feet from the proposal on Furnace Avenue. I can actually see the back of the house. And I'll have you know that my name, Mr. Demnide, is a celebrity because he made national news in a canoe on Furnace Avenue during the recent flooding there, about three years ago, and prior to that. Living on Cross Street, my friends have renamed the street Red Cross Street because the red cross is always out there after the floods are free shelter or whatever. I'm a landlord myself. I don't wish any ill will on anybody. I think six units, fifty-nine hundred square feet. I have eight thousand square feet. I'm also business B. I mean, could I put in eight? I just think we're going down that road where if anyone could knock down their house and slot in six units in such a small space. Also, are these all two-bedrooms? I missed, nine hundred square feet seems very small for a two-bedroom, it might have been. But I would like to see it cut down to a four or even a two. As a matter of fact, it was originally a one, and now they call it a two. But if you see the city's own assessment, you've circled it at the bottom. It's a two-family conversion, so it was converted into a two at some point, but it's a very small. Parking's always an issue there with the hub on the corner. Sergeant Ryan, before he retired, frequently calls to, can't really hear, Furnace Avenue right on the corner there for traffic. Now, beside this is going to be the pump station, and then beside that is a very active contractor, which was supposed to have no impact on the neighborhood. You don't need an alarm clock now because at six AM you hear the dump trucks and the backing up. I don't know how the register's approved. I don't know if the residents are going to approve of the noise. But I think if anything, it's too dense. I'm not opposed to develop. And then the traffic at Furnace Brook in Copeland is real at Rushell. In fact, Councilor Palmucci made several of the streets oneways during the Rushells, including a portion of Cross Street on the other end. But sometimes cars stack from Furnace Brook back to the Copeland baggage store, which is the corner of Cross Street. And if this, I mean, you could say that six units isn't going to add significance. The last thing I'll say is an neighbor of ours who worked for a major Boston offer, she actually had to move because of the flooding. But she owns, when these developments came up, and we're not anti-development by any means, but she would talk about the loss of the natural sponge. She was very much into the environment, but I don't see how you can build this and improve the flood conditions. And again, right beside it, the city's going to be putting allegedly a thirty million-dollar pump station, so I just think six units is too much. You think you can use that?
Look at it, Michael. Do you want to submit it to me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just so you guys can see, it's a conversion. It was originally a one feet street, gone from what was a one to a six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else wishing to speak?
John Ro, excuse me, John Rutherford, sixty-two Grand Mall Road. This project here, I'm against this because it is in a flood zone. Not only is it a flood zone, when I looked up the flood maps, the AE flood BLE level there is forty-nine feet. So this is a massive flood zone. I mean, other than where you built Deco, this is one of the worst flooding places around. So when it does come to, you know, I heard a prior gentleman said he has faith in the Conservation Commission. I do not have that same faith that he has in the Conservation Commission. So I feel that, you know, we are destroying our city by developing in flood zones, and by developing in industrial zones, and by developing places where we shouldn't be developing. This is six thousand eight hundred and forty square feet according to the assessor's page, even though this says it's a little bit more than that on this application. So using the assessor's number, when I divide that by six, I get one thousand one hundred and forty square feet per dwelling unit. Now, it's business B, so that converts to residential C. In residential C, you're supposed to have fourteen thousand square feet to begin with. So let's, you know, they're not even close to that. And if you did have fourteen thousand square feet, then you have the right to be as dense as two thousand square feet per dwelling unit. So they're not even close to that two thousand square feet per dwelling unit. They only have eighty-two feet of frontage. You need eighty-five feet of frontage. So this is putting something where it just does not belong. When there is a flood, all those cars are going to get destroyed on that first floor. People are going to move there who are not from the city of Quincy. They're going to be at work someday, and they're really not going to know how bad that area floods. So, you know, we're putting new people that move to Quincy in peril. A lot of the apartment places right now in Quincy, the retention rate of tenants after a year is only like fifty percent. So yes, we're getting people to move to Quincy, but we're not getting people to stay in Quincy. It's not fair to develop a building, move into someplace, and then have to listen to construction all day long, all the time. I have nothing wrong with development. We need new growth. Without new growth and new taxes, then the people who already live in the city taxes are going to skyrocket. So we do need new growth, and we do need new building, but we need good planning, and that's what the planning board is. And, you know, before I sit down, I just want to throw a shout-out to member Sean Callahan, who served this board greatly for three years. And, you know, I was very proud of a couple of decisions that he did make, and I miss him. So a shout-out to Sean Callahan, and I just want to say I'm against this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, everybody. I am Molly, twelve Bates Street, Quincy, Massachusetts, a senator of the council at large. I am also not in favor of this. In two thousand twelve, the city bought a very overpriced piece of property on Furnace Avenue for a pumping station. And I realize that the money's not here for us to do a pumping station. We're going to be putting a pumping station in a flooded area. You can get all the variances you want, and you can build, you can put the cars underneath the building if you want to, but in essence, what you're doing is you're protecting the building, you're not protecting the cars or anything else on that street. You are going to be building in a flood zone. CONCON can tell you that they can do certain things to lessen the impact of that, but this is the city of Quincy. This is the planning board of the city of Quincy, and we have to take those types of things into consideration. This is not a good development when it comes to putting in an area that we've identified as a flood, a critical flood area that we have to put a pumping station. Until we put that pumping station in, I'd say that you really shouldn't be extending any more permits in that area to actually, to build anything more that's what's there. Now, people want to renovate or do the things, they want to pull their houses up, that's fine, but to put six units where it was a single-family home in a space that's smaller than, in everything about this project, in almost every project that's coming to you, are having to have variances. We're breaking every rule to make it accommodating for the developers. It's time for us to take back control of what we're putting in this in Quincy and start putting good development in. Good development is what we're asking you to look for. And in this particular case, because it's in a flood zone declared by the city and an overpriced piece of property as we wait to have a pumping station, promised for the area of West Quincy to protect other areas that are also being flooded, we need to start actually being responsible for those things. Those are decisions that are being made, and we're asking you to make those decisions to protect the neighbors and the taxpayers who have waited for that pumping station. And I just, I just think it's a really poor example of good development. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name's Ed Kelchik. I am the landlord of thirty-three Furnace Avenue, the fifty-six unit apartment building at the end of the street. My family's had that property since it was built in the early seventies. I am all for beautifying the area. That's what I want first and foremost. I'm concerned with the additional traffic that the street is now going to have to handle with the condition that the street's in. We've been told that they're going to address the street once the pump station goes in. The pump station's been put on hold. There's no date. There's no plan at this point. It's on hold. So the road's on hold. The road is so dangerous to drive down, you have to focus on how you're driving around the potholes to focus up and around to see if there's children playing. And if you have a six-unit, six-unit building with two bedrooms each, it's guaranteed to be kids playing this far from the road. Have you folks been down to the street to see the condition of the road? Okay, I don't think I have to say anymore. Additional traffic is not what Furnace Avenue needs, but it does need to be improved. Pump station, road, and all those units, but not until the road is done. Sidewalks, safety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? As I alluded to earlier, if you don't want to speak, it can be recorded. There are sheets on the window ledge right over here. Heard the last time anyone wishing to speak? Okay, so we have not heard back from the review. It's still out, so. I would entertain a motion to continue this to our March meeting.
So, second?
Discussion, all those in favor? That's thirteen.
So that was March, not February?
No, March.
March, thirteen.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, excuse me, two-seventy-nine Willard Street, twelve Bates Avenue, Planning Board Case two oh one, eight past two-four. Notice is hereby given that in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section eleven, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January ninth, two thousand nineteen, Honor of About Seven Forty-five, on the first floor of Board's and Commission's Room, Quincy City Hall, thirteen Hancock, thirteen oh five, Hancock Street, Quincy, Mass. The application of R E C E, Massachusetts LLC, eighty-five Place Street, Quincy, Mass, oh two one, seven zero, for a site plan review under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title Seventeen, Section nine point five point one, site plan review, special permit under section five point one point one seven, parking whip. The applicant proposes the construction of a new three-story mixed-use building with three thousand eight hundred square feet of ground floor retail space, twelve multi-family dwelling units, and surface parking for thirty-eight vehicles. Applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-nine, more or less, square feet of land that is located at two-seventy-nine Willard Street and twelve Bates Avenue. Subject property is located within the business B zoning district and is shown in assessment plan four oh eight three, plot twelve, strike that, plot eleven, and assessment plan four oh eight three, plot nine, and plot fourteen. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rob Fleming. I'm an attorney of Fleming &amp; Fleming. Mr. Chairman, as I always typically do, I apologize on behalf of the board to subject the board to two Flemings, pack it back. So I do represent B, Massachusetts LLC, concerning its proposal at two-seventy-nine Willard Street and, what I'll refer to is actually twelve, fourteen, and sixteen Bates Avenue. The parcel, two parcels are located on the corner of Bates Avenue and then Willard Street. With me this evening are the architect, Brian Donahue. Jim Burke from, to sell Burke's Olive was not able to be here this evening, so I'd like to be able to present to the board tonight. We did receive some peer-review comments from Chris Iannuzzi from EBI. Mr. Burke is currently responding to those few comments that Mr. Iannuzzi had, you know, currently. If the board may bear with me a little bit as I kind of present this, as the board knows, most of the members here, Fleming &amp; Fleming, our firm, represents a lot of developers, clients who have done a lot of developments in the city of Quincy throughout many years. While this particular project, full disclosure, this is one that my brothers and I are proposing. We actually own this particular property. The Fleming family, we have a very personal relationship with the city of Quincy, especially this particular area. As we grew up, we all grew up in Wesleyan. As we grew up, we all grew up in West Quincy, my three brothers and myself. I myself lived in West Quincy from third grade right through high school. During these years, we developed many great relationships. In fact, I know the board has, knows Scott and Sean Galvin pretty well. We grew up on the same street as them. I worked in Quincy for many years in high school, managing properties for small local property owners, some properties on this, in this particular block of the California Boulevard, Wood Street, Bates Avenue, for a number of years. My brothers and I, you know, began investing in this particular area, buying some properties over twenty years ago. First, in the apartment building adjacent to the subject property, which I'll talk about a little bit, why we have it kind of incorporated in this, in this plan. And the Crescent Plaza on Bates Avenue, we had owned at one time, and we did sell it about ten years ago to Zappy Abraham, who was the owner of the Old River Cafe, that location. We did acquire properties behind the commercial building on the corner of Bates and Willard, two homes that were, you know, that we actually raised over the last couple of years. I open tonight's hearing with this because this is very personal to the Flemings, because we grew up in this particular area. We made a commitment, you know, over twenty years ago to invest in this particular section of Quincy. We established some great relationships over a number of years with many of the business owners in this particular corridor. For example, Frank Traynor, Sean and Scott Galvin, the McDonald's as well, Rob, Bob and Sean Curry, Bob Conley and his wife, who own the Animal Hospital on Willard Street as well. All of them have shown support for our proposal here. And we see all these improvements that many of these properties owners have made over these years, and we really want to be a part of it. And we've worked hard over the last number of years, you know, looking at our property, wanting to do something that fits and uses that are really going to benefit this particular area, you know, for the neighbors and the residents of the city of Quincy. So we didn't take this lightly, you know. We thought about this for a while. In fact, we had a neighborhood meeting a while back. Enterprise Rent-A-Car was still in our commercial building, so we were kind of bifurcating the development of the corner. And so the neighborhood meeting involved a much denser proposal at that time. It only included the Bates Avenue parcel. It was strictly residential. Sometime thereafter, Enterprise made a decision to vacate and relocate on that five hundred Adams Street. So that really freed up, you know, the Willard Street parcel as well. You all probably know Willard Street pretty well, well-traveled, very commercial. So we thought, you know, a, some type of retail component to our proposal would be the best fit, you know. Still a great area to live in as well, so that's why we're proposing a mixed use for that, for that location. So on to the site itself. So again, it involves two parcels, two seventy-nine Willard Street, as well as fourteen, twelve, fourteen, sixteen Bates Avenue. It's a little, it's just shy of twenty-seven thousand square feet, located in the Business B zoning district. Again, two seventy-nine is currently improved by a single-story, about nineteen hundred square foot retail building, again, most recently occupied by Enterprise Rent-A-Car, who vacated almost a year ago, end of February of last year. This particular building sits right on the property line, both fronting Willard as well as Bates Avenue. This building obviously will be demolished for this proposed development. Twelve, fourteen, sixteen Bates Avenue had been improved by both a single-family residence as well as a two-family residence, which were, you know, as I said to the board, raised over the last couple of years in anticipation of development. Anticipation of development, but also they were very, very difficult to maintain. These were really dilapidated properties. When we purchased them, you know, we had every intention of improving this entire site. When? We didn't know exactly when at that time, so we did our best to kind of keep these properties in good condition and rented, but eventually they had to be raised. Both of these properties as well had very, very minimal front setback on Bates Avenue as well. So to get to the proposal this evening, we have it up here for the board to see. You have the same plans, you know, before you as well in a site plan. So the proposal is for a three-story building, mixed-use building, containing about three hun, thirty-nine hundred square feet of retail space on the first floor, again, both fronting Willard and Bates Avenue, and then six residential units on each of the second and third floors. There are thirty-seven surface parking spaces to the rear of the site with two driveways for access and egress to the parking area. It also will include a kind of courtyard, which is the upper right-hand corner there for future retail users of the space. Although we don't have specific definitive retail users at this point, there's been much interest, and we've talked, spoken to a few over the last, you know, few months. In addition to site plan review, we will be requesting a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals as well, which we have not filed as of yet, for the setback of the proposed building, front setback. We felt the retail component of this proposal to be, to be close to Willard Street. I'll reiterate that the current building is right on the lot line. This proposed building will be pushed back several feet, you know, from the sidewalk. Allows us to do maybe a little bit of landscaping at the front of the building. So again, you know, we did have a neighborhood meeting some time ago. I've had a lot of correspondence and dialogue with Council of Palabucci. He's been pretty supportive for this. He thinks it's a, it's a good fit. We feel this is not dense. We're taking photographs of the site, I was standing on the hill, kind of California Avenue, looking down, and, you know, what we've done over the years representing different developers, you know, that could be a lot denser proposal, you know. We've designed this in a way where we're really trying to meet all the dimensional requirements the best we can. So again, we're seeking setback because we feel the retail component should be, you know, closer to the Willard Street and Bates, Bates Avenue for that type of use. I'd like Brian Donahue, our architect, to say a few words this evening.
Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brian Donahue. I'm the principal of Donahue Architects here in Quincy. I'll start at the, at the site and move through the building briefly and just get everybody to lay the land. Obviously, this is Bates Avenue, Willard Street, our building is hugging the corner of Bates and Willard, and the actual entry into this building parking is off of Bates, so there's an entry and egress for thirty-one spaces. This parking is delegated to the thirteen-unit apartment building next door.
Yeah, and I forgot to mention that. We did show it because it's an adjacent property owned by us as well. Part of the initial things we'll have to do is build a retaining wall, both on the site for development, but also here, here as well. It's a granite block wall, the chassis would be replaced. The parking exists today, just a different layout, like for two ninety-three Will, two ninety-three Willard Street. So it's a little bit different layout that we're proposing, but same number of spaces. But I didn't want to confuse the board with that, that entrance, driveway entrance to that site, but I wanted to show it because of some things that are happening adjacent to the proposal of that site.
Also, I'd like to emphasize that each particular parcel has their own dumpster location for servicing trash removal and so forth. We also have a number of open landscape spots for snow storage and wind. As you can see, the building is got in L shape with our two egresses and more of an entry into a courtyard in the knuckle of the building for use of the, of the retail customers. The plan at this point on the ground level denotes open spaces, where I mentioned there's no opening yet for retail users, but it's basically bisected, the core plan is thirty-nine hundred, thirty-eight hundred square feet or so, bisected by the residential entrance from the courtyard and from Bates Avenue. So we have approximately twenty-four hundred square feet of space on Willard and fourteen hundred and fifty square feet on Bates Avenue. And then this would be the location of the courtyard, so residential users and retail customers that also use the courtyard. As Rob mentioned, on the floors above, the two floors above, we've got six units per floor, varying sizes. There are six one bedrooms and six two bedrooms, so it's a fifty-fifty split in terms of the ratio of twos to ones. Again, it works off of central four, remote egresses, single road corridor, so all the residential units are facing Willard and Bates. The architecture is fairly contemporary and clean. It's, we've used basically two materials, two different shades of brick and composite panels, which are depicted in these areas here. The renderings are actually much more telling, but these are elevations that give you a height configuration. The highest point is thirty-eight feet, and that's done for a specific reason. We wanted to get some retail space and make these units more like lofts, so we have nine and ten-foot ceilings in the units themselves. You can see on the Willard Street elevation, the relationship to the thirteen-unit apartment that the Flemings own next door. So it's a brownish brick and a red brick and an off-white type of composite panel. And these are, here's the material page, it's in your package that we're showing, the color scheme that we're using. This rendering shows you from an aerial perspective of courtyard and the parking lot and the entryway for residential use of the car. And then this, this, these views are accentuating our building wrapping corner, the use of materials, the brown brick, the red brick, and the composite material. Obviously, the first floor storefronts at break. As Rob mentioned, as the former Enterprise building did, we were really hugging the corner with minimal setback from the, from the elevation. And that's basically, that's basically the presentation. Any questions on the buildings and so forth?
Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, a quick question about the parking. So the parking is for the retail and the residential?
Yeah, so we're really proposing these spaces will be utilized, will be clearly marked for the retail component and then residents parking in this area.
So what's the breakdown? I'm just curious.
Well, if you're, if you're spaces per.
Yeah, so we, we're meeting the parking requirement for the number of spaces, which represents, you know, one and a half spaces per unit for the residential, and then the, I think we have nine, that attends spaces for the retail components as well.
I'm just curious, because you never know what you're going to get. You might get a wildly popular coffee shop or something there, and you'll end up with, you know, parking issues.
Right, yeah, certainly, yeah, certainly different retail uses can, can drive the parking requirement. We feel, we'll approach that in a very conscientious way. The last thing I want to manage is a property that just can't support, you know, that just can't support the parking, it'd be, it'd be like, so the users, potential users that we've spoken to are such that, you know, they don't demand it that much, the number of spaces. They're closed in the evening as well, so we're hoping, we're going to be very, you know, positive of that. But we've used, you know, what the ordinance requires as far as what is to be required for, for a retail component.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
On the commercial, how many vendors do you have to break up those?
You know, it's all going to come with demand on how much space they need. We would not anticipate, we're probably anticipating two, you know, with a maximum of three.
Any other questions? My only concern is, we're probably as aware of it as I am, I think, for members, with the maston configuration at that intersection, I mean, it already looks like, I understand the purpose, but, you know, whether something could be done with that maston, which will affect the marketability of your stuff.
It will, you know, you know, whether, are you talking about relocation of that?
Well, I don't know. I don't even know if it's possible.
Yeah, we've thought about that as well, and there's, I think there's a light signal control box as well, which I have not discussed that with the city as of yet, because you're right, I mean, the signal itself is pretty pushed back from the corner, you know, of that intersection, and can that be relocated, to be closer to the corner? And so that's some, some discussions we'll have to have with the, with the city, Chris Casati's office.
That maston probably goes back to when Home Depot, I think, for its approvals.
Right, right.
Whenever. Any other questions? Okay, it is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? Come forward, identify yourself. As I've said in the previous public hearings, anybody who's a little reluctant to speak, we have sheets, windows, ledges. Come on up.
Hi, how are you? My name's Kamal, it's a family, I live at fifty-two Grove Street in Quincy, which is up the street from this development that's going to be, I'm all for development in the city, but that particular area and up, that whole area from my street, which is Grove, down Bates Avenue, onto Willard Street, is a nightmare for traffic. Also, I have, I didn't hear which way the vehicles would be going into this parking lot and coming out, because it's on Bates and it's on Willard, because there's a sign, it's illegal to take a left turn at certain times of the day. So I'm not sure how they were coming down the truck.
Yeah, so I can answer that for you. So as of right now, the drive, each driveway will be both ways, however.
On Bates, on Bates.
On Bates Avenue. There's only access to the site from Bates Avenue, but there's two driveways.
Okay, well, my question is, if you're coming down Willard Street and you want to go into your, this particular area to park, you're going to take a left onto Bates, or a right, depending on which direction you come from.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
What I'm saying is, there's no left turn from seven to nine a.m. and from four to six, because of the traffic in the area.
For accessing Bates Avenue.
Right. So how would you, how would people go in there? Illegally take the left to go in?
In your, if you're, that's only if you're coming north, correct?
You're traveling north, yes. You're on Willard Street, Bates Avenue again. That's twice. I mean, people do it, it's illegal, it's constantly being, there's traffic up and down my street is a nightmare, and they're coming from Willard Street, up Bates.
Yeah, I think, I think in the Grove Street area, we faced this when we had a neighborhood meeting, a big part of the problem, what's been conveyed to us, is that many people are getting off ninety-three.
Yes.
South.
Right.
You know, to access Bates Avenue, which is not legal.
It's not legal, right.
It's not legal, so it's not legal to do that. I have, myself, I haven't seen that with respect to Bates Avenue.
Right.
And that light becoming, you know, backlog at night. It could be the case, I haven't seen it myself, yeah.
I have, I'll be coming, I mean, anytime you'd like.
As far as access to Bates Avenue.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like, how would they get there during that time? Because we have enough issues with people.
They'd probably have to travel southbound to make that right turn on Bates Avenue.
Well, they're not going to do that. They're going to take the left, illegally, like all the people do that are commuting. It's just the way it is. And we don't have any traffic forcing the traffic in the city.
If I may, every Fleming, I think the concern is that, that traffic is going to continue up Bates Avenue.
That's right.
Right? And you're afraid that cars that are taking a left here are going to continue on Bates Avenue. So we can work with the city to provide additional signage that there'd need be no, no further traffic. If cars are going to come in with a left, they're going to have to add to the driveway or they, they, they. or they, they can't enter that way. The, the concern isn't here, the concern isn't here, it's, it's further up Bates Avenue into the, into the neighborhoods in West Quincy.
I mean, it's that whole route, it's that whole route from, from Willard Street to Bates Avenue to Grove, down either back onto Willard or up onto Governor's Road.
So what we would do is work with the city.
Thirty-two years I've been living there.
No, I understand, so we would work with the city that if, if folks are trying to access our property, that they can't travel any further up Bates Avenue, because that would be, that would be, well, it's, it's the same enforcement of a, it's the same enforcement of a no left turn, the same, same kind of concept. If, if cars are turning, are taking a left, come into the site, they cannot go any further up Bates Avenue or they're violating the ordinance that's prohibiting, prohibiting that traffic from going any further during those hours. I think that's your concern.
It definitely is, because it's, it's an issue with us constantly, I mean, I'm surprised nobody's been killed up there. But I, that's, my question is, yeah, how do you enforce that? Okay, you can pull into the parking lot, but you can't continue up Bates.
Well, but our, our folks that are turning, our folks that are taking a left are only going into the site, they're not going up Bates.
Not traveling down to your house, your neighborhood, yeah.
Well, hopefully that's, but they still can't take a left from that time, is what I'm saying. So you're gonna allow them to take a left because you have a store there?
I think it could be.
Or because you live there?
No, it may be a relocation of signage, you know, to prevent them from going through up into your, to your neighborhood. We'll have to talk to the city about that restriction, I, I wasn't aware of that restriction. We'll talk with the city about that restriction.
Yeah, well, it's there, and it's been there for thirty-two years and before that, and it was put there because of traffic in the neighborhood.
And we wouldn't want, we don't wanna, we don't wanna add any traffic to the, to that street.
Right.
We don't wanna add any traffic to the street, but we would love to be able to get access to it from the site.
Well, I understand that part there, but, you know, maybe you should make it access on Willard Street and then there wouldn't be a park, and not allow access onto that with the time restrictions. Or we're just gonna get rid of a sign that I've bought my whole life, thirty-two years for, of those two signs.
We can look at the, we can look at the Willard Street access.
You know, I mean, it's, it's a nightmare in the neighborhood, I could show you a video anytime you'd like.
Yeah.
Anytime.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Counsel. How are you? Yeah, Mahoney, thank you. Could I see a picture of what this building's called? Is there a picture or a render? I couldn't see where I was sitting, I apologize. Is this, is this the same design as what was down, was the down by the library, the Galvin building? It was very much like the Galvin building here.
Brian's up, the architect of the Galvin.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because it looks like it. So I'm gonna start with, I'm gonna start with, I know traffic isn't something that you guys look at, but in this particular area, and the Fleming and the Galvins, in this particular area, have done several different developments which have been approved by this planning board and everybody else along the way. And at every time that there's a meeting, a public meeting, a traffic engineer or something comes up and says, this will have adverse impact in the neighborhood, it's not gonna cause any problems. And this particular area, just heard a neighbor say, this is cut-through traffic, has nothing to do with the development, it's all cut-through traffic. But since I've lived there, and it's been twenty-four years, it's gotten enormously worse, and it's because of development, so it's not just cut-through traffic. Cut-through traffic has always been there, the highway has been going through since, you know, my house up in that neighborhood was built before the highway was built, so we, my, granted, I was just able to live on the side of the track, so I know when that sounds awful, I think, I grew up here, so I absolutely know what the cut-through traffic is. And we do have it, but we also have another problem, which is, everybody in the city Quincy trying to get around to it. It's not just during the peak hours, it's all day up there now. And we've had development and we've been told that it's gonna not impact us, but it's impacting the neighborhood. And to say that we're gonna work with the city and change the signage to make it so that we can get into this building and it's not gonna impact anybody up the hill, that's not right either, because basically you're saying, there's rules for the people that drive in the city, and then there's rules for the people that live in this neighborhood, this building, and there's rules for people who live in the neighborhood, which comes down to enforcement, and nobody's doing enforcement. But this development that's gonna go in, they're, they're saying that they have no idea, which I find that really hard to believe, that the Flemings had no idea because they owned, they owned a bunch of stuff over there, and they, they know they own the building over at that Railroad Cafe and all that stuff is over there. So if they didn't know, then they're, they're, they just don't know what's going on in the city. And they're representing everybody in the city, that's disturbing to me, right there. So, and not needing to argue, to say that that's just disturbing. But you had public hearings, and in the public hearings, the neighbors came and they basically gave the same description. So I'm not sure, is this public hearings just for, just to check a box off? Because that's what's really frustrating with taxpayers of the city, because we're putting development out, we're having public hearings, we're having these things, we're checking the boxes, we're giving the developers everything they want, and we really have to stop doing that. So the next problem I have is parking, and I really appreciate your question, because you asked if we're gonna put retail there, which sounds great, right? And they have a couple of ideas, we're not telling us who they are, but they're gonna close at nighttime, blah, blah, blah. There's three, at least three, that's three spaces of the eight that are gonna go into that space. They're gonna have employees, where are the employees gonna park? They're gonna have customers, where are the customers gonna park? And now, maybe I work from home and my car's there, maybe of the people that are there, which is very common now, just so you know, people that get jobs in Boston, we're all working from home. So our cars are staying there, so you have thirty-eight spaces that you have, that you're planning on using for the retail, we're not gonna leave it. Some of us are working from home, so you're not taking that into consideration. So these are the things that were challenged within the city Quincy, because all these cars that we say are, you know, that you're gonna park in, your development, that we're gonna actually, you know, joint use for other things when we have these mixed-use developments, we're staying there, we're, we're working from home, I'm working from home, I, I don't work from home every day, but I work from home. So those cars aren't leaving. And then you're saying, well, it's a walkable city. All right, it's a walkable city, so what are we gonna do? We're gonna, we're gonna put the development, close her out in the street, and now we're gonna work with the city to move the, move the lights. How about, now, that's, those are a lot of problems right there, just in this one little project. And one last thing, when you add thirty-eight spaces of pavement and then you put a flat roof, has anybody done the cubic square feet of the water that's gonna drain into the storage pipes and the drainage pipes? Because we're not taking that into consideration either, because as you're doing all this development, the runoff is going in and it's all backing up and it's flooding. Again, in an area that we don't have a pumping station that's causing all these problems. I have issues with all those things, because we can't fix them as fast as we're developing the city Quincy.
But that's retained offsite.
It's retained offsite, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I'm telling you right now, that the very same things that people are saying is retained offsite in development that we have had happen are flooding. So I'm just bringing it up, and it's my right to bring it up, and it's my concern, and I think it's a real one. So before you check the box and say, yes, go ahead on, I need us to start thinking about those things. Because you can say it's retained offsite, but the same place that's retained offsite, Quincy High School, tell it about all those cars that got flooded in a flash rain, that should not have had a problem, and that was just less than a year ago. Okay, when you had the principal of the school out pumping up cars, because, and I can tell you, all the parents that went, that got patrol calls from their kids saying, you want your car back to story? Because of what? Because we retain the water offsite, that should never have happened. Check the box. I just really want you to think about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Congress. Anyone else wishing to speak?
One quick question. John Rutherford, sixty-two Grand Law Road. This is Business B, which goes to Red Sea, okay, so I'm kind of a proponent of either do a commercial development or do a residential. So it does sound, from listening to the testimony of the last couple of people, that there really is a problem. I'm thinking right now that there could be cars backed up on Bates Ave at that light, and they might not even be able to take a left to get into that parking lot because they're going to the commercial place. So if it was all residential, the amount of, you know, there's probably more people that go to Starbucks every day, more cars that go in and out than would go into the Monroe Place every day, where a hundred and twenty units are there. So if, you know, I got a feeling, you know, I've been to a lot of meetings, that this is probably gonna get approved. I mean, I'd be shocked to see this project not get approved. So let's approve it in a better way, you know, maybe, and if I could ask the Fleming Brothers, could we maybe have another neighborhood meeting, like a new neighborhood meeting with the people and discuss it? I mean, we're not against developing there, but maybe get a better idea. And let's say if they were gonna do commercial, if that is their choice, we really have to know who those tenants are, because that really does make a difference. I mean, whether it, if it is a Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts, that's gonna cause a lot of traffic. If it's a real estate office, then that might not cause that much traffic. So it really does make a difference. And whether it's one business or three businesses, that does make a difference too. So, you know, one business, thirty-eight hundred square feet, commercial, that's gonna be extremely expensive, but it's a matter of, you know, what we need in Quincy right now, we really don't need any more two-bedroom apartments, we get a ton of them. What we need is, you know, there's a demand for one bedrooms, there's a demand for studios, there's a demand for three bedrooms. So if you build studios, you know, why not build twenty-two studios there and call it, you know, the studio apartments or something? That way there'll be less cars, I mean, you know, we need new growth, so there could be new growth there, but one of the reasons of having it that close to the curb is for the commercial aspect. So let's say if we didn't have the commercial aspect there, it could maybe get put away. Because right now they have twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine square feet, that's what it said in, in the documents. When you divide that by twelve units, that's two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven square feet, which, and they have more than fourteen thousand, so they, they actually are within the dimensional requirements, although there's no way they're on the setbacks. So I'm not for this project, I'm not against this project, I would just like to see this project modified so it doesn't cause such a burden to the people that live in that neighborhood. Now, when we do talk about traffic, there's traffic everywhere in Quincy, so we're being burdened by traffic everywhere. I certainly know that if that was a Starbucks, I'd get off that exit on turns, you know, you'd get right off the exit and go there. That would be, there'd be a lot of people going there. So, you know, I would say, you know, let's look into this a little bit more and let's not rush to approve the project until, you know, we're better, you know, we know it's not gonna have as bad an impact on the neighborhood. So the Flemings do a good job in the city of Quincy, and out of all the people they've represented before, this is, I think this is one of the better projects that they have represented. Now, we are approving very, very dense projects all the time, and it's time basically to maybe stop doing that, okay? We should maybe adhere to the zoning code. So maybe if someone came in here and said, hey, they want a special permit to do something, you should maybe say, okay, we'll issue that special permit, condition that you adhere to the zoning code that is already not enforced in our city, you know? And another problem I have too is just the fact that even though there are, we are issuing a lot of permits to do very dense projects, it's the same few people coming up here time and time and time again. So, you know, if someone else came up and asked to do this project, I don't think it would get approved, and that's something that we really have to look at in the future. We have to be fair to everybody, everybody must be treated fairly. And if we allow this development to happen like this, we must allow everyone to do what you're allowing a certain few to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may, just respond, but Council Mahoney's comments, one regarding, you know, stormwater, as this board knows, that is thoroughly reviewed by their own independent peer review engineer. You know, that's been done, comments again have come back, very few comments, but those will be responded to by, by Mr. Burke. These systems work, you know, for the retention of water. With respect to the parking, you know, thirty-eight spaces, you know, represents two per unit for the residential and then fourteen spaces for the retail component, you know? Again, we've looked at it, we, we looked hard at this, what's gonna work there without it being too dense? We don't feel this is a dense proposal, considering some of the things that, that have been permitted in the city of Quincy, that have worked as well. You know, we feel this was, was a reasonable proposal for this particular site.
Come on up. You've been very patient down there.
Jay Don, do you have no relation to this gentleman? Thank you for having this meeting tonight. My family's been a lifelong residence of Quincy, five generations, two hundred years. My home is a hundred and eighty years old, it's located on the corners of California and Bates Avenue. I know everything everybody's talking about, I've been in Miami for twenty-five years, I gave home seven years ago to care, take my mother. My mother was perled on you. She passed recently, and my great-grandfather died in the quarry behind us, which is now Home Depot. That's how long I've been around here. The way I'm hearing everything, it sounds like traffic in the city, and I see it daily, it's like Pac-Man, you can't even figure out how to get to where you need to get. And the traffic situations that I see from my home, which is really right up the street from this gentleman's proposal, any given day of the week, the traffic gets off the expressway and takes a left off of Grove Street. And that there, if you put a couple of police officers down there for a couple of weeks, would drive that problem right up. Now, in regards to California Avenue, every day I'd say about a hundred cars come up from Home Depot, and they come out of Home Depot and they take a right on California Avenue by my home. I've seen twelve homes razed in my neighborhood over the last number of years, families I grew up with. I used to play down the street where they're talking, I knew the Petites, which that house was at twenty-three Bates Avenue, raised, and now the owners of a particular coffee shop have built a beautiful private dwelling, and then you have about six or seven bedrooms. Alma was right behind me, she lives across the street from there, and then you get four beautiful Cape houses, and then you had Welch's, which was razed, you had the Spleens, which was razed, you had a number, in, in the company, the Galvin Company, built it, which I mentioned in front of you before, did a good job, and they're working nicely. And the traffic that I keep hearing about is not, and I don't wanna disagree with anybody, and from these particular residents, it's from the outside people coming in. And the young lady that spoke earlier about taking the left, and I'm fully aware of that, I've been there my entire life, I just don't know what you do about the traffic. I know that you're probably the last line of the defense, or the first line of defense for our city. You could look at our city in an abstract that is under siege, but development is a nationwide activity, and traffic is too, and I think you're all doing a pretty damn good job. Now, who am I? Well, I've got about twenty single-family homes that I'm personally involved with in Quincy, not as a landlord, but as residents. My brothers, my sisters, my aunts, my uncles, we've been here our entire lives. I took a sabbatical and went to Miami. I developed an area called South Beach, I'm sure you've heard of it, I've been there for twenty years. I came home to take care of my mother, and I met a beautiful young group of people, and I have a business here called Grand Asia, it's right over there on the corner. I'm there seven days a week, almost seventy hours a week, standing out front, greeting and welcoming the tourists. Nobody was affected more in this city by parking than me, because we lost it to the park here and the spaces, which fortunately now are being opened up again, I guess in three weeks. So I understand what's going on here. So I don't know what the answers are. I know that one thing is a fact, if you're gonna do any development in the city of Quincy, I hope it's people that you really know and trust, because when I see projects start and unfunded well, they sit there for months, waiting for additional funding or investors or what have you. Two of them are on my street. Now, I, I'm vaguely acquainted with these gentlemen, I think they've got a good reputation, I'm sure there's a lot of things to be worked out, but, you know, I was uncertain about Galvin, they did a great job, and I hope these guys can do a great job, and I hope everybody can find common ground and work together, and I just wanted to commend you. And I'm not a real estate guy, and I don't have any business other than what I mentioned, so I don't, you know, have anything to do with you or anybody else behind me. I say thank you, and I hope everybody can work together, and this is the young lady that's new, correct?
Yes.
Well, you know, I hope you all work together and do a great job here. I'm very pleased when I see the, the direction of the city. I'm not a politician, I love what they did with the carmen over here, I suffered for two years abstractly until they built it. It's one of the most beautiful pieces of architecture in the country, whether you like it or you don't, or it cost us, whatever, I think the guy upstairs is doing a pretty good job, I think you, the city council's doing a good job, I think the city's in pretty damn good, excuse me, pretty good shape, you know, and I just wanna commend you. So I don't need anything from you, I don't want anything from you, I hope everybody can come to a common ground and we can have a good city, because, you know, two hundred years we've been here. My family came over, is Irish, Irish developed, polite type of thing, all that, we know, and we've struggled, and it's great to be back in Quincy, it's great to be back in Massachusetts. And I work with Grand Asia, so you put the pieces together, you know? So I'm not used to this, so, thank you very much, and I hope it works.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak, or it could be recorded? Last time, anybody wishing to speak, that'll be recorded. I just got one comment, and that is, I would like the applicant to take a look at some idea of what the retail signage on the building will look like. I, I understand you don't know what it is, who it is, okay, but location-wise.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just got one comment, and that is, I would like the applicant to take a look at some idea of what the retail signage on the building would look like. I understand you don't know what it is, who it is, okay, but location-wise.
Absolutely. And that's something we certainly have considered, and again, some of the groups that we worked for, you know, representing, we might take a clue from them on some very, very nice conservative signage.
Yeah, something for the board can digest.
Yep.